Morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Jackson County Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, April fourteenth of two thousand and twenty. Can everybody see me okay? Or they need to prop it up a little bit. Teresa says fine. Okay, we have Luann here today with us, our executive assistant. I see Lisa is over across the hall. She's with us. And Clark is here, and Larry McDevitt, Jack Willie, myself, Mike Steinis are your county supervisors. See, we have a few visitors online with us. We are doing the Zoom meeting again today. Do you have any questions at any time? You can unmute yourself. Otherwise, we ask that you mute your end of it, so we don't hear too much background noise. With that, anybody got any questions right off the bat? Little different again. So if not, we'll start with Clark Shaw as our county engineer.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning, Clark.
First item on the agenda is driveway permit for Julie Tar. This is the Washington Township Section twenty-four, one four hundred and thirty, three ninety-nine. This is inside the incorporated town of Green Island, across from church. The site distance is one hundred and fifty feet or five hundred feet north, one hundred and fifty feet south. It's one hundred and five from the intersection. But since this is in town, you know, it needs like distance.
So the speed limit's thirty-five or something there?
In town, about twenty-five.
So you're okay?
Yeah, if you're going thirty-five, you know, there you're.
You're okay with the one hundred and five foot then?
Yeah.
Any special signage or equipment that's needed done or no?
No. I can make a call for it here. So moved. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Recommend the intern's permit for Julie Tar in Washington Township as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carried.
The next item is the utility permit from McCoggeville Valley Electric. There'll be starting six tenths of a mile east of the intersection of Highway fifty-two and three hundred and seventy on Street. We're proceeding for one point seven two miles. Basically, new poles anchors for a seventy-two hundred volt line. And then also we have the pre-rotic poles. And of course, it'll be putting trees and brush with these ready with, and it's recommended for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the intern's permit from McCoggeville Valley Electric on three hundred and seventieth Street as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carried.
The next item would be awarding of the paint striping quotes. Of course, we should have bids now. We had two bidders, Camline, Highway Markings. Their bid was one hundred and sixteen thousand three hundred and ninety-one dollars and sixty-eight cents. Five more things, like, sure, and sixty-four thousand and sixty-eight thousand was a good one. We had the folks who are out of all the traffic services, which is a big jump in that. And we are recommending the warning of three of these moving years. We have relevant ones. And they have done the striping work on, you know, as far as the market, there's a way to watch.
And you're comfortable with them?
Yeah.
Quite a difference there.
I agree that you put the one hundred and twenty-one markings for one hundred and sixteen thousand three hundred and ninety-one dollars and sixty-eight cents.
I would second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the paint striping quotes from Camline as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carried.
Then the next one is a random crack ceiling. Basically, thirty point eight miles or sixty-three thousand nine hundred mile per minute feet. Manette's was low at sixty-three thousand five hundred and fifty-two dollars and eighty cents. The others, technical highway construction, ninety-seven thousand eight fifty-four and portcamps. And please, their construction, ninety-one thousand three hundred and sixteen dollars. We were quite surprised by the, you know, disparity between high and low. They're comfortable with their quote. And, you know, again, through the years, the three of these have done work for us and correct ceiling itself.
Is that about what we do is forty miles a year?
It depends on the budget. There were years when, you know, before we had the dime increase, that crack ceiling almost disappeared on that. So I would say since, you know, the dime, that's kind of rebounded. So that's kind of where we're been at the last few years. All depends upon the winter, too, on how severe the winter is. And we go out and measure cracks every year to see what we need to do.
I'll tell you, looking at the difference in making, you know.
Difference in.
How spread out they are.
Yeah, I agree. Who did it last year, Clark? You know?
Oh, geez. I think that was Jinko last year.
I mean, I think that's holding up well. I mean, it is.
Yeah, well, I'm sure that's only in a year.
Yeah, I understand. But we paint the stripes every year, too.
Yeah.
That's a racket. That gotta last more than a year, don't it?
It should. Yeah, let's put it this way, for environmental concerns, when they took the lead out of pain.
Oh, yeah. I would move to approve Manette's Incorporated, sixty-three thousand four hundred and fifty-two dollars and eight cents.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve Manette's as the contractor to random crack ceiling quotes for sixty-three thousand four hundred and fifty-two dollars and eighty cents as presented. All those in favor say aye. Oppose, nay. Motion carried.
The next item we have is really a discussion. We need to, you know, the one hundred and eighty-eighth Street Bridge on that, which is closed. We really need to get moving on, you know, getting somebody designing that because we like to shoot for, it's still possible you have to get a March letting. That means you're still possible in the beginning of constructed, you know, in the calendar year twenty twenty-one. But the longer we delay that, the more that window closes.
What's the normal timeframe from start to get your preliminary quotes in and whatnot?
For, from, you know, design to letting is a year. But we're believing that we can squeeze this in.
A year?
A year. Because there has to be.
March letting, that would be a year from now.
Right.
Because you've got environmental, you've got archaeological, you've got stories.
So typically, who does the environmental?
That could be any outfit that's.
So could you start that process, like doing the G O?
We had started the process with the geotechnical and the archaeological. But the rest of it, they gotta have time to review it, too. There's preliminary plan design and there's check plans. And right now, there are only two people out of the state of Iowa that review plans for the landing rate counties in all the cities in the state. And, you know, you kind of wondered if they would get the coronavirus, what would happen on that.
So, as you know, and we all know here, we're in the process of negotiating with an individual that has the capabilities of designing bridges. So, I mean, again, it's another county along with the shared new legislation that passed. So there's a good possibility, or there is a possibility that we may have that opportunity. So if, does a couple of weeks pass by, Clark, are we still okay?
If you're saying by the first of May, let's say we're pushing it, it's probably possible. It's still due yet. If we're gonna go beyond May, then I guess I would like it on record.
So.
Department will be responsible if it doesn't get built by twenty twenty-four.
You can do that. For my part, my, because another county had a meeting yesterday, and we're negotiating. They're supposed to come back with a proposal.
Here's the thing, too, if they want to charge more than ten thousand dollars, then according to our procurement policy, you have to go out for calls.
Thousand dollars for what?
Bridge design. Anything you're going for outside services, according to our procurement policy, anything more than ten thousand dollars.
Understand. Well, if everything works out as projected, it won't be outside contractor doing it.
I guess I would have to defer to Lisa. We're gonna be negotiating with the county for more than ten thousand dollars on services. Do we got to allow each of them?
We're not negotiating for services? No.
Well, then what are we negotiating for? If it's on services?
Well, there's a possibility that he would be an employee of Jackson County. That's what our intentions are.
Then we're getting into discussions that had been warned before on closed session that. That wasn't my understanding, that he wanted, this person or the county wanted to be an employee.
From way back when, we said we wanted to hire a new staff person to assist in the county engineers office.
That's correct.
And that person that we talked to declined.
That's not true.
Yeah, it's true. He declined.
That's not true.
Somebody to be able to design bridges in-house.
True. But that person that we talked to declined.
So we're trying to save the county a little money here. That's what we're trying to do, Clark. Are you opposed to that? Or can we wait till the first of May?
Hiring a person as an employee, now, what we spent over the years for bridge design is cheaper than hiring that employee. We showed that in fix and figures that we've had and presented to the board. But you're so intent on hiring a bridge design person that that's being ignored.
How do we know? How do we know?
We presented facts and figures. We spent, on average, over the last five years, like twenty-seven thousand dollars per bridge going to a consultant to design bridges. We do two of those a year that run through the state. That's fifty-four thousand. You're not gonna give a bridge design person for fifty-four thousand.
We don't know that.
Going to do.
That's not all he's going to do, and we don't know that yet.
Well, then why aren't we re-advertising out for positions and for, you know, a bridge engineer? Again, we tried once.
That's what we advertise for, and that's what we interviewed for.
Why aren't we doing it again?
Why would we do it again? We interviewed people.
Then I want it on record, I want it in the minutes of the meeting, that we won't be responsible if one hundred and eighty-eighth Street Bridge doesn't get built in calendar year twenty twenty-one.
Okay, I would like to.
In the minutes of the meeting.
I would like this table for a period of two weeks, anyway. That's my opinion.
Because over the years, we have been short-staffed. The amount of money that we have saved in salaries, or I had a second assistant at one time. We didn't for over twenty years.
We are, we budgeted that you could hire one.
We tried to, we are in the process of trying to get you some help. That's what you want.
Well, basically, what you're looking for is a succession plan. We attempted it once, you know, going up and advertising to the general public. Why aren't we doing it again?
We're not.
So, I mean.
We're not doing it again.
Because you and I, we should go listen to that tape because it was recorded. Because that person at that time declined, didn't want to be an employee, wanted to kind of hire out as a consultant, outside consultant, not as an employee.
Not true.
That's true.
No, there was, there was two options presented.
Yes.
At the close meeting.
Wanted to be more of a consultant. I challenge you, let's go listen to that tape.
That's not really in front of the board right now, a closed session meeting. That was, that closed session meeting can come to anyone after this process is over. Otherwise, that's closed session information.
This is new to me, that we're negotiating with another county to hire an employee for an employee for secondary roads. This is new. You asked me for two weeks, you know, two weeks ago, for to have, you know, have a county outside of, you know, an adjoining county, do our design for a county, not for an employee.
Not true.
Oh, yes, it was.
Well.
I guess if you want to hire a county to do it, fine. I'm not objecting to that. But, geez, you know, there's so much confusion going on here. Are we giving an employee? Or are we hiring a county as an outside consultant?
We're trying to hire an employee. That's what we advertise for, an assistant engineer. That's what we advertise for.
Because right now, I'm being left out of the loop here.
It's the board decision if they want to hire somebody for that position.
And you gotta remember, too, that position's gonna be working with this office, and we're being left out of the loop.
You were in the interviews with us.
Yeah. And there seems to be confusion over, you know, did that person decline or not? They declined to be an employee.
We actually interviewed two.
Yeah.
Neither of them have been totally eliminated at this point.
Well, we gotta get going soon here. Let's talk about one hundred and eighty-eighth Street.
Yep.
We need to have it designed. And again, like I said, I'm not gonna be responsible if it doesn't get done in calendar year twenty twenty-one.
Okay, let's have a scenario. Let's say you send the RFP out. You get the RFPs back.
Can we decline their?
Yeah.
Can we decline? Yes, we can. You bet you.
What's the cost of sending them out?
The postage stamp.
Is there any fees associated?
No.
Okay.
Other than mailing fees.
I mean, if that makes you feel better, I would think that we could wait two weeks.
Um, I said, yes, we can wait two weeks on that. But, you know, just what are we doing? Are we negotiating two weeks for an employee? Are we negotiating two weeks for what I'm gonna call acting as a consultant? I have no idea.
At this point, Clark, we are negotiating for an employee, just what we advertised for, an assistant engineer. That's what we advertised for.
Yeah. And, like I say, then.
Anymore?
The county engineer and the secondary roads department is being left out in these discussions. I guess I have to ask why.
You were in on the interviews.
But I'm talking about the discussions that you're having right now. Why is the secondary roads and the county engineer involved for an employee that's gonna be in their department? No other department had, would be treated this much.
You were a part of the interviews.
Back in February. You are now negotiating in April.
We didn't have that opportunity then.
I'll just leave it go with that. It's gonna be your responsibility, and it'll be your responsibility if it was to be built in twenty twenty-one. And like I say, I want that on the record.
Any further discussion on the one hundred and eighty-eighth Street Bridge design?
I would move table it for two weeks. Second.
Have a motion and a second to table the discussion for the one hundred and eighty-eighth Street Bridge design. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carried.
Miscellaneous items. We have people remove the barricades.
Again?
We're talking, not the other bridge, the iron bridge, where we're doing the resurfacing of this bridge. Basically, now, we're gonna put a D plow on the bridge to keep people from, the bridge is closed for a reason. People need to respect.
Get some cameras out there. Get some cameras out there. These people need to be.
We should buy a hundred dollar trail cam, yeah.
Also, too, last week, we had seven sides run over, just plain old run over.
Let's have our game on that. Let's get some cameras out there. And I don't know if there's some that you set up remotely and send pictures back here. So if somebody's walking up and stealing a camera, we have a picture of them here.
I know a lot of these, you can, you can download the app to your phone, and you can see the pictures from your phone. I don't know if the sheriff department has any demo sec, does that access to any of those?
Let's talk to.
Bjorn?
Bjorn. Let's see if we can't hook it into the courthouse system or something. Send it, send the pictures back so it's recorded.
One thing, if we set a D plow on the bridge, so, you know, even.
This is.
But.
Are you resurfacing the whole bridge or just the approaches?
We're doing bridge approach work, and then, you know, from that, from that bridge approach going towards Andrew.
Right.
Resurfacing.
I seen, I seen the concrete that was poured.
That's where the drop off was, I think, the other day.
Yeah. So, you know, it's, it's.
You know, that's the thing that is so irritating, like with Centerville Road and all of that. As long as they have waited to have something done to improve their surface, then they do stupid stuff like this.
It certainly is an inconvenience. We know that.
It's hard to understand.
Yeah.
It's a safety issue. I mean, if somebody else is coming through that is not familiar. I mean, okay, Catfish Hollow would be a prime example. If things were, shows were going on, people are coming from all over the country to go to that, and they could be coming across some of them roads, and they're not familiar with them. It's.
Yeah, it's not, you know, are they endangering themselves? Yes. Are they endangering others? Yes.
Probably more so others, because they don't recognize that there's anything wrong.
Well, I would say sometime before a meeting's over, let's get Bjorn over here and discuss what we, what potential we might have in. Or some way of surveilling.
We're gonna link into a satellite system that shows. That might be another option. It's amazing what you can pick up with those, too.
What, do you know, Clark, what is the ramifications if they take that barricade down and drive across there? Is there a charge?
There is a, you know, can be some misdemeanor charges for removing the barricades. You know, let's say you're removing that barricade, and it results in an injury because it's also being out.
And it could be liable.
You would have to see if there are any further criminal things that could be done. But there definitely be some civil stuff.
Oh, and if they damage the, the resurfacing or any of that, they ought to have to stand the cost of repair.
Right. Yeah. And technically, right now, it's project, so it would be between whoever damages whatever up there, contractor did, it'd be between them and the contractor.
Who is that contractor out there named?
That, I believe, is Manette's. So, right now, it was just like Centerville Road, when that was damaged, that coming three hundred.
Twice?
Twice, yeah.
Yeah, that, it was between the contractor and whoever damaged it in their insurance company. They don't have insurance. They're, something contracted was siblings.
I think there's still could be some type of fine associated with that, destruction of property.
Okay. I don't. Thanks, Clark. Next on our agenda is Lisa, and I can see her.
Do you want me to wait? I will. Looks like we have other guests on today.
Yeah, I, if you want to, you can, sure.
I can.
I'm sorry?
I said I can yield if we want to get our guests on today.
Okay. Nick, are you available? He's unmuted. Now he.
All right, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Can't see you though.
Good morning, everyone. I made the mistake of having my camera on earlier, and I am, I'm not ready for primetime.
Oh, I see.
Look at that little circle on top of shoulders, huh?
Yeah, right.
Nick, is there anybody else that will be joining you today?
Yeah, Dave Hires should be on the line here, I think. And I'm, I think Roger Stewart was gonna be on the line. He may be one of the phone calling ones.
Let me unmute Dave. So we'll unmute Dave, and we'll see who is on our telephone line here in just a minute. Good morning. This is the auditor's office. Good morning. Can everybody hear? This is Lisa in the auditor's office.
This is Rod Stewart.
Okay.
Good morning.
Morning.
Matt's, Matt's back with ECIA.
Okay.
And Dave Hires is also here, so.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
Yeah, so we wanted the opportunity here to talk to you a little bit about, we'll first bring you up to speed on a program that we heard about recently, that's been set up for emergency business assistance for the city of Dubuque. It's being spearheaded by ECIA, Matt Spec, and Dubuque Initiatives, which is a nonprofit community and economic development organization in the city of Dubuque. And they had heard a need from the businesses in the area who have been impacted by this COVID-nineteen crisis, that a gap financing tool for those who are applying or have applied for the federal programs for business assistance would be beneficial. And so, so broadly, and Matt can jump in and correct me when I say something wrong here, but very briefly, the, the program seeks to extend a ten thousand dollar loan for those who are, for businesses that are applying for the paycheck protection program, or the Economic Injury Disaster Loan Program through the SBA. What, what we had heard, and, and so the, the concept there is that it would be a short thirty to sixty day loan until the federal dollars came through. And at that point, the loan proceeds from the local funds would be returned. So there would be no fees, and there would be no, or no fees charged to the business, and no interest charged on that short-term loan. If, in fact, if, for some reason, they were not eligible for the program in the end, or the loan for other reasons needed to be rolled into a more long-term loan, the program would kind of roll that loan out of that short-term stopgap measure into a three-year loan, I believe. Matt, is that correct?
Yeah, Nick, so it's actually the six-month, no payments, no interest, and then the loan would actually be amortized over thirty months. So it's really a three-year from when the funds are dispersed to when the final payment would be made.
So I read this, Nick, this is Mike, and I, I read that, can you see me okay?
Yep, I can.
Okay, so I read this yesterday. It's the same email that Kelly and, there's two of them up there that released. Is that correct?
Yep.
But ECIA, okay. So it's plagiarized off of that, pretty much?
Yeah, so, so we were, so I guess this has been kind of my preamble here to, to say, this is what we were made aware of. Yeah, based on that email, that was a good explanation of the program. And that was a problem that Dubuque was seeing, in part from what we're hearing, because the banks that were helping to disperse the, the paycheck protection program loans were getting backed up. And what we've, in conversations with, with Roger here, and some of the conversations that I've had with our financial institutions in Jackson County, that's not the same issue that we're having here.
Right.
In fact, most of our, our banks, I mean, the process, at least for that one program, the PPP program, which is a forgivable loan program to these businesses, our banks have been able, though it's been certainly a heavy lift, they have been very responsive and quick in processing these. I think that's one of the, the lucky situations we're in, where we have some great local community banks who have been able to, to process them more quickly and get those funds out to the businesses faster than we would be able to do through another, you know, layer of program. So while Dubuque seemed to think that they needed a short-term kind of loan until these other loans could be processed, that may not be the need that our businesses have here in Jackson County.
May I interject here just a moment, Nick, in regard to that? In regard to the payroll protection plan, it's called PPP, the mechanics of that is that a small business or a business under five hundred employees brings information into the bank in regard to their payroll over a, over a period of time. And the bank inserts or takes that information, and then they send that to the SBA office. And the moment they do that, it is enrolled, and then the bank is the one who actually. and then the bank is the one who actually advances the money. So there's no lag time in regard to the time that it's submitted and the money goes to the, uh, to the, uh, to the, uh, client or the small business owner. So there was a, a bit of, uh, misunderstanding, let me put it that way, but I can attest to you that, uh, the banks in Jackson County, and I know firsthand from McHulka State Bank, they're working really hard to get these, these, uh, applications in because they wanna get them in before, for some reason, they run out of money or something like that. And I know that as of last weekend, we, the, our bank had sixty-some, uh, loans in and, uh, more have come in the last couple of days. So they're, they're processing the money, the, the applications, and the money's going out, uh, uh, almost immediately.
So I guess the scary part to me is the government side of it. You know, what's, we have no collateral basically here for this. Um, so if their payback is going to come, we have to trust them that it's going to come.
Well, I, I think that in regard to what Nick just talked about, I think maybe there's no need there for that particular program. Is that correct, Dave or, or Nick?
Yeah, I think what, what we're seeing is, as, as it relates to this specific problem, um, that the Dubuque program was seeking to solve, I don't know that that's the same problem, um, our businesses are having here in Jackson County. Now that doesn't, you know, this is the first wave of applications for this paycheck protection program as, as well as the economic injury disaster loan program. Um, so that in some future time, maybe the, the banks do, you know, get an, another round of applications that cause some delays, but at this point, that's not what we're hearing. But we, we've reached out to our financial institutions and will continue to do that, um, to see if there's some other gap that we might be able to craft a local program here to provide, um, relief during what is a very uncertain time for businesses and, um, to minimize the impact that we might see in the coming weeks and months.
So, so just to add on to that, Mike, and I think this might address your question. Today, we're not asking for anything because we don't feel like there's a need for anything that we see, but we're gonna continue to monitor it.
Last week though, correct?
What was that?
I said that has changed since last week when we, I talked to Nick there briefly.
Correct, right, right, because we didn't realize how quickly it was being done here. We were hearing what was happening in Dubuque and assumed that it was similar here, but because our banks obviously can process them, uh, faster and have less of their own internal bureaucracies, um, we don't feel like that the need to do anything right now with our revolving loan fund e- exists, but we may be back if things change or we hear something else.
And I think we're open to all that.
Well, as, as Nick and I talked earlier, I said I think the board would be receptive, you know, because it's, it's, it's a climate right now that we're not used to. And so I think if there's a way that we need or could assist the businesses, we would certainly wanna do something.
To, to further the discussion a little bit, I'd like to visit with you a little bit about thoughts that we've had and discussions that we've had in regard to the revolving loan fund and how we've kind of, uh, progressed in what we have administered over the years. And, um, we thought, we, we had a, uh, conference call with Matt and, uh, uh, Brian Schwager last week and, and then further calls in regard to what the revolving loan fund might do and what we, at, at this time of uncertainty and, and worry about our community. And we had talked about it, and, and this conversation, uh, also included Nick and, and Dave, and I appreciate that, uh, and that discussion had to do with perhaps, um, giving or, uh, making an un, uh, a forgiving type loan, uh, to an entity that would administer to those organizations or nonprofits like, uh, the food bank or the, uh, childcare, uh, co- company or co- not company, but business, uh, that wasn't included in the, uh, the, uh, items that were in the government programs. And we, I guess we kinda want to get your idea in regard to that kind of, um, kind of initiative where we in fact would give to an organization like the Community Foundation to administer, uh, a amount of money that would help those people that were on the outside that don't qualify for a government program, uh, that are, are in, in, uh, right now. So I just wanna throw that out to you and see, see your thoughts in regard to, uh, some type of, uh, forgivable, uh, loan that would help, uh, our community, our county, and, uh, would be there for what might come up, uh, in the days ahead.
I guess my thoughts on that, Roger, are there's so many unknowns, uh, again, for everybody, including the county, you know? What, where, is our revenue's gonna continue? Are the taxes gonna be paid? You know, this is a, this is a long road to haul, so I guess with, what you're asking for forgivable, um, of course, we'd have to know a dollar amount, that's, that's gonna be the big kicker.
Sure, and, and keep in mind, we have around, and Matt just let me know this morning, we have 775,000 in the revolving loan fund. And I'm not suggesting by any means that it's a huge amount, but it would be a, a meaningful amount that we might give, uh, to, uh, someone like the, uh, Jackson County, uh, uh, ca- Community, uh, Foundation, and they would administer it, uh, and, and Dave or Nick, you know that that's up and running right now, can you kind of?
Sure, so, so let me, I, I just had a, a conversation with Mary Jo Gothard yesterday about that. So about a week ago, uh, the Jackson County Community Foundation established a, a fund for emergency use similar to what, uh, Dubuque and other surrounding counties have done too. They put $10,000 of their own money into that fund, it's kind of seed money, and I know that they've gotten a few other smaller gifts, um, amounting to approximately a thousand additional dollars into that fund. And anybody can, can donate to, to that fund. Um, at this point, and again, it's very new because it's only been, um, announced about a week ago, they have not had any applications for, for that, but, you know, what we're hearing, um, um, on the street, uh, you know, and I, it may not be the food banks because we've made another grant application to assist the food banks, um, should they have more needs, but, uh, rent might be one of the things that some of the laid-off employees might be needing some help with. Um, a- again, what, it's too early to know. Again, I think we're just trying to plant some seeds for what-ifs and let's give this some thought and consideration. No specific asks today, but we may, it, once we know what some of the specific needs might be, uh, we may be back to have a, a continued conversation about some of those things.
And I'm sure, um, relief program will be seriously involved with assisting the citizens of Jackson County because we help with food, we help with rent, um, all sorts of things. And I'm sure that Becky Chapin's office, phone and door will be knocked on quite a bit for assistance because obviously people need it to, to exist from a day-to-day.
And I, I was thinking the same thing, you know, as far as, um, general assistance goes, I know she's getting more calls, I've talked to her about it and, and, and we wanna do our part in this also. Um, I, I respect the input from the revolving loan board, Roger, you know?
Yes.
The board has talked about it and you're their spokesman, is that correct?
That's right.
Okay.
Uh, let me take this just a little bit further, and that is that I know from talking from Patty Manuel from, um, McHulka Valley Electric, who is on the Community, uh, Foundation Board in Jones County, they have initiated this type of, uh, organization also in Jones County, and they started it, uh, with $5,000, and they have had, uh, a request already from tw- for $2,500 from a childcare organization, um, and so I, and I heard, and the reason I knew about this was that I heard it on the radio yesterday that they had, uh, created this organization. Uh, also heard yesterday on the radio that Clinton has done, uh, also has a disaster. Now that may fall under the county, I'm not sure about that, but I'm also very sure about what Patty Manuel, uh, they've done in, in Jones County because I have their plan, uh, they, she sent me yesterday and what they're doing in regard to, under the auspices of, uh, the Community Foundation of Greater Dubuque.
Okay, I, I, I really think we're all on the same side.
And, and if I can just.
But I think, what I think is also is gonna be a very li- a fine line to, to do here, the screening process or the pick and choose, you know what I mean?
And that's why, and that's why, uh, we'd like the Community Foundation to do it, uh, and, and as far as the revolving loan fund, all we do is make a, a forgivable loan or if you wanna call it a gift, uh, we can call it a gift, but, uh, that's, that's what we've talked about and all we're saying this morning, I believe, uh, gentlemen, is the fact that, you know, we're trying to find a way that the revolving loan fund can be helpful in this time of uncertainty. And that's all we're trying to put out on the table this morning and kind of, uh, think about it, talk about it, and, uh, get your feedback.
So the foundation then would kind of guidelines to how they would qualify?
Yes.
Actually, they already have, uh, the, the program set up and I can send that, uh, what, the information Mary Jo sent to me yesterday, I can forward that onto Luann and she can distribute it to all of you. Um, it, it's, again, the, the Dubuque Community Foundation kinda set up this model and all of the, um, satellites or affiliates, which includes Jones County and, and Jackson County, basically are using the same format, um, for that distribution. But there's a local committee, obviously, that would make the final decisions on where, where the, the money goes, even though it's affiliated with Dubuque County. But, you know, I, um, Mike, as you're talking about the whole general assistance thing, and I, I've heard of that, but I'm really not familiar with that very much. So maybe some of what we're talking about is already being addressed by, by that program. How, how do we get to know more about what that program is or how it works? I mean, do I need to?
Obviously Becky Chapin can share with you the guidelines for general relief when somebody is applying. Um, there's an application and there's cer- certain criteria and, um, we can have Becky Chapin send that, that information out to you.
Well, that would be really helpful, and I think, you know, even the Community Foundation probably should be aware of that too so that we're not duplicating services, I, I mean.
Every general relief director and they provide services to those people that are in need, so, um, we can certainly send that out.
Thanks, I'll, I'll send the information from the foundation and if you could have Becky send the other information to us, we'll, um, make sure we're trying to coordinate things.
So with this being said, I mean, are, are we, do we have another week to decide or talk, or do you?
Oh, sure, sure.
Yeah, I think so, Mike. Part of, part of what I, what I'm working on is reaching out to our, our financial institutions and the businesses themselves to make sure we are being responsive to the needs that they have. You know, I, I, I understand Roger, uh, what Roger and Dave are talking about. That program, um, could also be very important. I know that the Community Foundation has put a lot of those wheels in motion for this, uh, emergency disaster fund for nonprofits and, and in some cases, some of the same clients that the general assistance might be, um, seeking to serve. I just wanna make sure that we're also considering, um, the impact on our larger business and industry that we, uh, will start seeing, um, very soon.
Uh, let, let me interject one here, one thing here, and that is, this is just a conversation we're having this morning. I don't have, uh, I'm speaking for the revolving loan fund, but I haven't gotten total approval from the, uh, revolving loan fund or we haven't had, uh, something put on the table that defines how many dollars or anything in that, in that area. Uh, I, I guess, w- the people that I've talked to on the revolving fund are, are, are thinking about what can we do with the money that we have to be responsive to this time in, in history, I guess. And so that, we don't expect, I don't expect in any shape, a decision from the board this morning, but it's just food for thought. And again, uh, the committee that, that I, that's on the revolving loan fund would have to give approval before we come back to you, but we want you to be thinking about what the revolving loan fund can do.
Well, that's what Roger and I, Nick, I told him kind of the process, that there's a representative from each one of the banks in Jackson County, and, and the request is made to them and they review it and then bring their recommendation to us. So, you know, you know what the criteria has to be, you know what the limitations might be, and that's what we count on you to do.
And, and I, and I take that responsible, that responsibility very seriously, um, but I don't, you know, I don't wanna bring something to, we don't wanna bring something to the board that is not a good idea.
We know that, we know you're very conscientious and, and, and Nick, maybe you better bring, give Henry something to eat.
I know.
We, uh, we certainly wanna do our part to help the businesses and individuals in Jackson County, so that's what we're here for and, and we work, we work for the taxpayers and so, yeah, whatever you come up with, we'll be willing to listen anyway.
And we'll get that information from Becky sent out to you.
And, and do you want that to go just to the Economic Alliance and to Mary Jo, then to the coalition?
We can pub, we can forward it to Mary Jo, but if you wanna send it to her, that's fine too. I, she doesn't know we're having this conversation, um, but, um, yeah, if you get it to us, we'll make sure it gets distributed.
Uh, dispersing. Uh, and of course, if you have any thoughts, uh, give us your feedback, uh, we appreciate that.
Okay, thank you, Roger.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for the time this morning.
Dave, Matt, is that correct, Matt?
Yep.
Yeah.
Have a good day.
Thank you.
All right. Lisa, we're back to you.
Mike, I will yield, Becky is on, and I think we'll let her go ahead next.
Okay. I don't see her.
Hello?
I don't hear.
Hey, can you guys hear me?
Yep.
All right, so just for the sake of waiting for my turn, I decided it would be easier to zoom in from my office, so we'll try this. Um, I am on the agenda today to discuss our final insurance rates for our health insurance renewal through the Iowa Community Trust. Each year, we are presented with the renewal through the trust as well as several other benefit plan options. Due to the fact this year, the trust implemented an across-the-board increase of 11.82% for our current benefit plan, we looked at other benefit level options for lesser premium. We found it to be more cost-effective to change our benefit level in exchange for substantial premium savings this year. Due to this, I recommend moving from trust benefit option number six, which we currently have, to benefit option number seven. With this, employees will see a very minimal rate increase and will receive the same benefit levels with the exception of the office copays increasing from $15 to $20 per visit. Vision insurance will increase by only cents and dental rates will remain the same. Um, so unless you have further questions on the health insurance renewal or the benefit outlines, I would look for a motion to approve the Wellmark Insurance Renewal Rates, choosing the Iowa Community Trust Option Number Seven as presented option number seven as presented, and to authorize myself to sign the health insurance renewal through the trust, including the fiscal service agreement for fiscal year '21, and any required compliance paperwork.
Well, I don't know who all had a hand in this, going through all this, but whoever did, they did a tremendous job. I can't say enough of, about, you know, that kind of savings, and really didn't change anything as far as out-of-pocket, per se. So that was a, that was a, it was well done, I'll say that.
Thank you, and I'll just say that Lisa and I have worked on our insurance renewals over the past 20 years. There's a lot of calculations and a lot of figures that go to in this every single year, and it's not too many times that we're able to see substantial cost savings as we are this year, so.
Well, job well done, yeah, I commend you both for that.
So Becky, I took this just a little bit further out, like for the rest of the state, 99 counties, if they did what you did, it would save $12 million in insurance rates for the counties?
Right, and you know, the thing about it is that a few years ago, we joined the Iowa Community Trust, so we are pool-rated with other like governmental entities. And I don't know of the 99 counties, how many actually participate in this trust, and how many are still just fully self-insured directly through Wellmark or another provider. So it's definitely some information we can share with other counties. I'm sure our broker would love the opportunity to reach out and quote anybody interested, so.
Yeah, that's a good find.
I would be authorized, like Becky said, for option seven for the renewal rates?
I would second.
I have a motion in a second to authorize Becky to implement option seven renewal rates, and also authorize her to sign.
Right.
Anything else, does that cover it?
That was all for me for today.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Stay on the line, Becky.
Okay.
Were you on, were you on list, okay, aye.
All's opposed, nay. Motion carried, no, Becky, we still.
Were you on the phone to hear our conversation with Nick and Roger and them?
I heard just the last few minutes of it, where I did hear the part about where they inquired into general assistance.
Yeah, I just thought, just wanted to tell you that if you could send that document over to Nick at Jackson County Economic Alliance, they would disperse it to the Greater Dubuque, kind of give what are our requirements, and what we do and don't do for general. So that they have that, do it, and then if they have any, any questions, they can contact us fast, or you.
I will definitely do that, I will watch their entire portion. I'm not really sure what they were there to present today, and how my program differs. So I will watch that, and then I can kind of correspond with them as well, but I will email that over to Nick.
That'd be great.
Yeah, they're just, they're just familiar with the general assistance program, what it all covers, basically, because we don't want to overlap, overlap services. If we're going to use revolving loan money as gift or non-payable grants, we don't want to overlap, or, again, we've got to, we've got to screen the system somehow.
Right, and have you had an influx of people coming to see you, Becky?
I have.
I thought, I figured you would have, I know Luann said that your door was busy.
Yes, lots of phone calls coming in.
Okay, just keep us informed, okay?
I will do that.
Always do.
We appreciate it, all the work you've done here, you and Lisa both on that renewal, so. Thank you very much. Yep, good day. Lisa, you want to join up today?
No, Mike, we have, we have other guests I see on. If you would like me to yield, I would do that again also for those guests that are with us.
Okay, I'm not, oh, Nathan?
Good morning, this is Lisa in the auditor's office.
Good morning, Nate Summers here, with DA Davidson.
Okay, so if that's okay, I will yield to Nate from DA Davidson to do his presentation.
Okay with us, yeah.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, thank you all for having me. I had.
It's been a little while.
PDF.
I'm sorry, Nate.
Go ahead.
We talked, I guess the last time we talked, we were in Des Moines.
Right, I remember, Nate.
That's true.
Well, it's good to hear from you again, and is this kind of a proposal, or just your kind of services you offer, and?
Yeah, happy to have a discussion with you folks today. Appreciate the time on your agenda. I had sent a PDF presentation over to Luann, that happened to make it to everybody. I sent it around noon yesterday.
Yes.
Okay, okay, so there's obviously a lot of pages in there. I'm going to do my best to keep it to my 15 minutes that I see that you've given me on your agenda, so I'll move rather quickly. If you have any questions, though, or you want me to stop and talk more about something, feel free to stop me and ask questions throughout. I would just go ahead and jump to page five on the PDF. The slide shows a record of excellence, just wanted to outline kind of who we are and what we do. We're a, our firm is based out of Great Falls, Montana. Our fixed income is headquartered in Denver, Colorado. Fixed income is basically our public finance group that handles all of our county finance. We also work with cities and school districts across the state of Iowa as well. We've got a remote satellite office set up in Des Moines, which has been there since 19, been here since 1989. Originally started the firm as Ruon Securities. I don't know if you folks are familiar with the Ruon trucks that you see out on the roads, out on the interstate? That's the same family started Ruon Securities. DA Davidson bought Ruon Securities back in 2009, and so we've been operating as DA Davidson since then. That slide six just shows, as an underwriting firm, we were the fifth most active underwriter nationwide in 2019. We've been consistently number one in the state of Iowa since our inception in 1989. Just to give you a little background about our, our firm and what we do. If you want to flip the page to page six, jumping right into some of our, some recent county projects that we've been seeing across the state of Iowa. We do work with a number of counties. We've done some recent work with law enforcement centers. That's obviously been kind of a hot ticket item around the state, as a lot of facilities become either dilapidated, or outgrown, or both. We've also seen a lot of the emergency communication system upgrades, as a lot of people move onto the ISICS system, as radios and towers become, I don't know if obsolete's the right word, but a lot of counties experience kind of some spotty coverage and putting officers in danger. We've seen a lot of upgrades of those systems that have greatly improved those systems. Additionally, we do see counties doing some capital improvement project work, things like HVAC systems on existing buildings, some road projects and that sort of thing. That's probably the least of those three kind of topics that we see financing for in counties across the state. If you want to flip to page seven, I'll jump right into what I think you're probably most interested in, and that's the law enforcement center financing options. Recently, what we've seen a lot of, I mean, the general obligation bonds, the first column there is the, I would say by far the most common approach to financing jails. I believe that Jackson County has pursued this option in the past with a bond referendum being required, and requiring a supermajority approval, 60% to be achieved for passage of the referendum. That's by far the most common route. Issuing general obligation bonds is going to get the county the absolute lowest interest rate, because of the way they're backed by property taxes. Another sort of path you can take with the general obligation bonds is if you can figure out a way to work with your bond attorney and apply urban renewal statutes and mechanisms. Those bonds could be subject to a reverse referendum, meaning a hearing is held, and citizens have the opportunity to put together a petition, and bring the petition to the board, and then if the petition is brought before the board, you'd be required to hold a referendum. But if no petition is brought, then there's no referendum. So those are kind of the two primary paths to general obligation bonds. Another option that we were able to achieve recently with Woodbury County, clear on the other side of the state, over in Sioux City, is pursuing a Chapter 346 joint authority, and that is kind of one of the reasons that I ran into a couple of your supervisors at the ISAC conference about a month ago. We were giving a presentation in conjunction with a, with a bond attorney firm, and had talked a little bit about this option. The joint authority would require a simple majority of a 50% plus one vote, and that referendum would establish the joint authority. The authority then issues lease revenue bonds instead of general obligation bonds. And so there's a lease between the authority and the county, and the county can levy a property tax to make the lease payments. So typically, in that situation, you're going to see slightly higher interest rates than the straight general obligation bonds, but probably not by a lot. I would say the biggest hurdle to that, to pursuing that option is just that there's a little bit more ongoing work to maintain the joint authority. They have their own, their own board, who's appointed by the county and the city. A combination of those two entities, you'd also need the county seat, city of Macocota, to be onboard and participate in some way. But if you can get the buy-in from the county seat, that they're willing to do the work to make it happen, that is able to greatly reduce the threshold for getting the referendum to pass. So it's a 50% simple majority plus one vote. Those are kind of the two primary options. The other option that I have there on the right-hand side is to issue general obligation, local option sales and services tax bonds. It looks like, I just looked at the county's audit from fiscal '18, and it looks like the city's already splitting local option sales tax revenues on a 75-25 split between secondary roads and rural services. So I suspect that you're already using those funds in a meaningful way, and diverting from that would probably require some cuts to the budget, and I suspect that's probably less desirable, but happy to talk about that further if that's desired. I guess I'll pause there and ask if there are any, any questions about those three mechanisms, or?
Have you had any of the counties that have, this is Jack, and I did talk to you out in Des Moines. The Chapter 346, are there many that are going that route? And if you would opt to at least discuss that, would you be willing to talk with the city of Macocota and their council about what we might do?
Sure, yeah, so Woodbury County, like I said, is by far the biggest one that has worked out. Their jail is planned to be at about $50 million. They're obviously, they've got a large metro, I'd call it a metro area in Sioux City. So they're going to have a lot of beds. There have been, I think Scott County maybe did it. Sorry, I'm working from home, so I don't have my map sitting right in front of me, I think.
That'd be the city of Davenport.
Yes, correct, there's a, there's a county in the bottom tier of counties, is it Decatur? Decatur County? Starts with a D, in the bottom two, two tiers of counties in the state, there's another more rural county that did it as well. So it's, it's maybe been done, it's been done less than a half a dozen times. But the state code is there, and the precedent is there, that it is a viable option, if you'd like to explore it. And if that's the case, the short answer is yes, I'd be, if you were to work with our firm, we'd be, we'd be happy to help kind of shepherd the process and talk with the city, and help figure out what's needed on that front.
Okay, well, I guess.
We had two bond referendums, and the last one was 58%, 58. something, but it still was 50%. And we have made some alterations to the jail at the request, basically, of all of the comments that we've received from the citizens of County. And of course, we are, we're hoping to have the next bond referendum in September, that they have needed all special referendums. Or Lisa's not sure how long it'll be before we can have one. It'll be next spring, or, of course, the longer we wait, the more expensive it's going to be to build. So I guess we, we're going to move forward as fast as we can. We're going to meet next week with John Hanson, who's our construction manager. He's going to get, you know, figures on what, what changes we've made are going to, what the final dollars are going to be that we would have to ask in our mind. So I think we'll at least discuss some options with the bonding attorney and the bonding company.
So that's basically what we were looking for was options, I should say, you know, we're looking for different options to our construction manager, and then, you know, when you spoke out there, you, I mean, you put on a really nice program, and it kind of opened our eyes a little bit, though, if there's anything else available to us, we would appreciate it. But again, we will keep you in the loop as far as where we're at, I think.
Sure.
And we appreciate any information you can get. Like you said, Jack said, if you wanted to talk to the city about the joint authority part, I guess the part about that is, I'd still like to see 60% be in favor of what we're doing. That's, that's true, it's not why we're doing it, is to get by with less, less approval. But yeah, it's an option, and if it's something that works for us, it does. If it doesn't, it doesn't, you know.
But the big thing is, we know that we need a new jail, and we've been having a tough time getting it in public to buy in.
We actually only missed it by 100 votes, but.
But we had a very, very short, small turnout, too.
And we're also looking at less than $6 million, so we're a lot smaller project than a lot of these other projects, so that's a good thing.
I hope you're coming back less than six. It was 685.
I don't think it is.
Well, we sure appreciate, yeah, I don't know if there's more of the program here that you would like to go through, but again, I think our, maybe Lisa wants to chime in here more. We're just kind of looking for, you know, maybe just a second opinion, basically, you know.
Sure, sure, well, and I guess, just to kind of put a bow on things, to define what, what role I'm, I would be, I guess, pitching to play. If you flip to slide eight, the role that I would be proposing that I would play would be as a municipal advisor, some people call it a financial advisor. And I would basically have a fiduciary duty to the county as an advisor. I believe you've been working with an underwriting firm in Northland Securities. You'd be able to keep them onboard if you wanted to keep them on as your underwriter. But they, as an underwriter, don't technically have that same fiduciary duty to you. It's more of an arms-length transaction type of a setup, where the underwriter, they're working for you in a sense, and so they want to see interest rates below, but they're also on the other side of things. They are selling the bonds to investors who want to see high interest rates. So they have a natural kind of, they're caught in the middle between the investors and the county. So they've got a little bit of a conflict of interest on that front, and so having a municipal advisor onboard can mitigate that conflict of interest. Like I said, we've also got some of the expertise in the, in the joint authority, and I think we can bring some other ideas to the table that could be helpful. And so that's, that's kind of the pitch. I'll leave you with slide nine, just outlining some of our recent experience with financing some of the law enforcement center projects across the state. It's just kind of a select few that we had picked out. Just got done with Warren County in Indianola, they put up a, they broke ground a couple weeks ago on a $30 million facility. Woodbury County's in the process of designing their $50 million facility, and just finished financing Carroll County's, just shy of $9 million facility last fall. So we've got some, some recent experience, and especially with the joint authority-type projects. Happy to walk the county through it, if you, if you'd like more information or want to start talking about having us be engaged, and actually start doing some of the work for you, happy to continue that conversation if you'd like.
Well, I guess, when, when we got back, we were talking about it, and I know I was really impressed. Well, I guess when when we got back, we were talking about it, and I know I was really impressed. I'm impressed with your presentation out there, and so far, really, we've only dealt with the one agency, and I thought, you know, from what I heard, I thought we needed to at least visit with you. I don't feel any different now than I did before, but we need to continue to have a line of communication with your firm.
Could I ask what your percentage is for your services? Yeah, so I I think if if you decide to meaningfully pursue the joint authority, that would probably increase some of our workload, so we'd probably have kind of a sliding fee structure. It wouldn't necessarily be based on a percentage of of the par amount of the bonds. I I would say if you wind up just doing a straight general obligation geo bond and decide not to pursue the joint authority idea, our fee is probably going to be in the seventeen to twenty thousand dollar range. If you want to do the joint authority concept, it's probably more like the thirty or thirty-five thousand dollar range. And that's just, there'd be a lot of extra time and meetings and things like that that would require us to be to be out there and interfacing with the city and interacting with the county as well. So I would say that's that's kind of the general range.
You know what they say about Jackson County? It's simply beautiful, so you might enjoy being out here.
It is. I I've been I've been out there a few times. I've 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 stopped by the courthouse a few times over the years, and it is a beautiful part of the state.
Well, I appreciate that, and we appreciate that, and I think I can safely say that we will keep you in the loop of where we're at and where our status is, and we'll discuss it, and if we've got questions, we'll be in touch.
That sounds good. Again, I appreciate your time. Let me know if if you want to start putting the wheels on the ground and and get things rolling. Otherwise, I'll I'll just kind of stand at the ready and and wait for your direction.
Lisa, did you have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions. I guess the main thing is that we're just, it's nice to explore all of our options at this point. You know, we're not set in stone with anything, and we're just looking for the best bang for our buck, I guess. So I agree with Mike, we'll be in touch.
I guess it's important to have that additional information.
Right, another, this is this is another opinion, that's the best, and so I guess that them figures you gave us as far as the fees, is that based on like a you you kind of know what size project we're up against here, or is that based on what?
Yeah, yeah, it sounds like you've got about a six million dollar project. Our our fee, frankly, as a as a as a municipal advisor, we're providing advice. We're not trying to sell the bonds, so we're not compensating, you know, sales staff to to sell the bonds to investors and things like that, so the the par amount of the bonds doesn't matter quite as much to us. The process is pretty much the same regardless of the size of the project, so that that's kind of what I'm basing it on, based on you know, some of the similar type work that we've done across the state. Those those fees are in line with what we would would typically charge for the process. I I do think the benefit, and I'll 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 leave you with this as far as my input, but the the benefit to having a municipal advisor on board, as I said, with that fiduciary duty to the county. One of our primary jobs is to give you financial advice. It's also to kind of sit on the same side of the table, on the negotiating table at the county. And as the underwriter sells the bonds, the the most important thing that you want to pay attention to is to make sure that you're getting fair interest rates and the most aggressive interest rates that you can get, and that's that's the other part of our job as a municipal advisor. And we only have to influence interest rates by a few fractions of a percentage, even even tenths or hundreds of a percentage to basically cover our fee. So I I think that's some of the other benefit. Hopefully, if we're involved, we provide actual value to the county in the by way of interest cost savings. And that savings hopefully would cover most if not all of our fee and then some.
Well, we would hope so, too.
Yeah.
Well, we appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, folks. Be well. Appreciate it. You, too. Bye.
I'm going to find my hardware back here. Lisa?
I'll make it short, sweet today. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the April seventh, twenty twenty board proceedings as written by Auditor Smith and authorized publication in the official newspapers.
So move second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the April seventh, twenty twenty board proceedings as written. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed nay. Motion carried.
Motion needed to approve and authorize the auditor's office to issue warrants in the publication of the claims listing in the amount of two hundred and sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars and twenty-four cents.
Second, I have a question for the Sheriff's Department, fourteen hundred dollars on the phone system. Is that the system that we were setting up with Becky and everything? It's for.
Becky said last week that the plan was implemented. Right? Did she say that last week?
She did. I'm not sure. Is that a US Cellular bill, or is that a?
US Cellular.
I would think.
That's a new one.
I guess I would. I guess I don't know, Larry. I would, I did not look at that. I looked at other claims.
Maybe we have to touch base with Becky and Shelley and see what.
What I can tell you here, Shelley just handed me this. The plan took effect mid billing cycle in March. Due to this, you'll see your new monthly charge effective with our three thirty, three our three, our, excuse me, our March twenty-fourth start billing cycle, as well as a partial monthly charge for service on the old plan from mid-March up to March twenty-third. Bills this month may be slightly higher due to this. Bills this month may be slightly higher. However, your bill next month will reflect your new reduced rate. So this is a memo that that Becky put out.
Okay.
Clark, I got a question on from Clark on that on the claims also. I don't know if he's over there or not. Yeah, I guess the other only question we had was Fairway. Again, I don't know if we've been negotiating at all with the any other facilities is is what they might be doing for groceries. We'll have to make contact with them.
Question for the sheriff's office or the jail administrator.
Yeah, okay, I'll go over there. Clark, on the end of claims, there was one to Lovewell fencing, maybe for guardrails. Is that something that was damaged or just replaced or thirty four hundred dollars or something? Thirty-eight ninety-five guardrail went to Lovewell in the claims. Do you know what that was?
That would be for a guardrail repair.
Repair that was damaged by us or someone else? Is that reimbursed back to us or?
If they got insurance, yes.
Oh, so it was damaged.
If it's an uninsured driver.
Winter damage or something? Okay, I just seen it in there. I didn't know if we were replacing something or if that were the damage. Okay, did you second that motion, by the way, Larry? I got a motion and a second to approve the warrants in the amount of two hundred and sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars and twenty-four cents. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed nay. Motion carried.
And the last item that I have today for my agenda is, as we all are aware are aware that the proposal for the recycling services in rural Jackson County that the deadline was April tenth, which was last Friday. The auditor's office, we only received one proposal, which is here in my hand from Dipmer Recycling. So let me open up that proposal. I have that in my hand from Dipmer Recycling. And I will, soon as we get done with our meeting, I will give you a copy of this. So what he did is Dipper Recycling will provide five forty-yard recycle containers for drop off. This includes one container for each location location listed above and one container to be used as a switch out. These containers will be rented for five hundred dollars per month or one hundred dollars per container. As far as the servicing of the of the bins, for Bellevue, it's two hundred dollars per haul. Iron Hill, two hundred dollars per haul. Preston, two hundred and seventy-five dollars per haul. And Otta Creek at a hundred and fifty dollars per haul. The tipping fee is forty dollars per ton for commingled recycling. He's included a brochure with the acceptable recycling material is. And Dipper Recycling requires a minimum of a three-year contract. And I will make copies and distribute this to you.
How large are the containers, Lisa? Does it say?
Forty yard, a forty yard recycle containers for public drop off.
Doesn't tell me a thing.
The current bins are ten to twelve.
Oh, okay, okay. It's a lot bigger.
They're almost fourteen. So I guess what, and that's the only bid you received?
That's the only bid that we received and no phone calls.
Okay, I know, maybe we could have extended that a little bit with everything that's going on, but I think everybody was well aware. You sent out.
I think I sent out seven proposals.
To individuals.
That's correct. What I did is I made a contact with Mallory Smith at the city of Makoka. And she gave me who they had sent RFPs out to, and so I mimicked that. And I only received one back.
Okay, so.
So what will we do with the recycling bins that we own?
I do not believe that we own those bins.
I do, we do. I I
What I can, what I understand is that they are in the transfer station or the landfills inventory. They are not in our inventory. I know that we've paid to repair them, but I do not believe that we own them.
Well, I thought we bought them when we first did it.
I know we talked about it several times. I can't, maybe I don't, to be honest with you, I don't think there's a lot of value in them bins anyway, but we'll have to sit down and do some math here, I guess.
That's correct. Yep.
See how it compares to what we were doing.
Yeah. Yep.
Okay.
For the board today.
All right.
Let me, I see that I have a gentleman on. John? Are you wanting to speak to the board today? No? Okay.
Larry, did you have a question for Luanne? Clark, I think we're finished.
No, I actually had a question for Clark, and it's a simple one. What's the difference between a one-lane bridge and a narrow bridge? Some of these are one-lane bridges and some are narrow bridges.
Yeah.
Same thing.
For for a one-lane bridge, you know, basically anything under twenty-foot width. And also, too, you know, the amount of truck traffic, if it's extremely high. You want to get posted as one lane because there isn't a upper or two semis, because the cars may be, yes, semis, no. On that, narrow bridge is basically, you know, the twenty, twenty-two foot bridge.
So narrow bridge is why you're in a one-lane road.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, that was my question. I just, I'm reading through this, and I'm like, so what's the difference? But now, all right, thanks.
Now you know.
There there is a difference. I mean, you can have bridges out there that are, you know, just, you're going to get one car or pickup.
I drove out to the county farm yesterday, I looked at that barn and took the back roads through, and there were some really what I would call narrow bridges, but they're one-lane bridges.
It's, it's a good question. I don't think very many people, people know about that, just the bridge out here, you know, when we built the new Makoka. There was an overflow bridge there. It was posted one lane. Good two cars.
Yes.
Anything bigger, meeting on that? No. I remember one time I says, well, you know, I'm going to pay the posting stop the car that was already on the bridge. Let me go, and someone pulled up behind me. Didn't quite like that I wasn't going through, and let me know I was number one.
So with that claim that I asked about, Clark, we do pursue the fact.
Oh, yeah. If there's a if there's an accident report, this is so-and-so, name, address, insurance company. If it's unknown, you know, there's a report, but there's no no person attached to that report, then we're kind of stuck with it. Rail is not insured by, you know, insurance representative.
I don't have the middle one signed yet, Clark, but you can have this one.
Okay.
I think I'm done with that. All right, thanks. Thanks, Lisa. Luanne?
Good morning.
Good morning. Sun was shining.
It was. We're losing fast. Maybe it'll snow again like it did yesterday.
That was awesome, wasn't it?
All right, four o'clock this afternoon is a book and river watershed management authority executive meeting, conference call for Larry. Tomorrow at five thirty is an operation review finance committee meeting for Jack. And at six thirty is an operation review conference call for Jack and Larry. That's a joint council executive meeting at six thirty. Thursday, April sixteenth at four P M. Is the local emergency planning committee call that has been filling at five.
Was that confirmed? I see she asked, and I don't know how many responses we got, but.
She set up the agenda with four o'clock.
Well, she's on the operation review board. But that's night four.
It is, I think.
She just thought it would be that better instead of going from five to almost six thirty.
Yeah, some people was getting getting late. I mean, there was a lot of conversation last week again. So maybe it'll get less and less. We don't know, but yeah, I didn't know if the four o'clock was confirmed. Okay.
We should set up the agenda. And at six o'clock, Thursday night, is a Landstone Luxe RCZ, their annual meeting. I'm going to do it by conference call or Zoom, and that will be for Jack. Friday, April seventeenth at noon is a workforce Iowa office hours call for Jack. That's every two weeks meeting now. And also at noon is a decat conference call for Mike. Monday. It's an hour early this time, yes. Monday, April twentieth at ten thirty is the potential hospitals use conference call. Usually Larry is on that for sure, for all of you have been on at the time. At one o'clock Monday afternoon is the regional advisory committee meeting for Jack. You know, it says Davenport, but I don't know if we may change that to a conference call yet. And at three P M. mid-afternoon is a regional governing board meeting, also in Davenport, Jack. That, too, will go to a conference call meeting. Seven P M. Monday night, I think there's a gathering, meeting, I don't have that confirmed yet, Jack. And our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, April twenty-first at nine A M. Also electronically, in that night at six o'clock, is a conservation board meeting for Larry, and that is to determine if it's going to be, you can't be interested, there's too many, but they haven't decided how they're going to do it electronically.
The last one I did with like a separation between.
When I asked her, she didn't know yet that they were going to do so. All right, business for today. It's time to get the noxious weeds resolution published for the year. I took last year's noxious weeds resolution and made one change to it. We added water. Blessing and conservation. It used to be the Navy plant, used to be just in wet areas, but it has moved into the fields and we added that to it as well.
Make a motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second to approve and to publish the noxious weed resolution as presented with the change. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed nay. Motion carried.
That is all I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Luanne.
Thanks, Luanne.
Work sessions, I believe we went through the two work sessions we had scheduled. We're down to any other board or commission reports or?
Yesterday, we had Iowa Works Mississippi Valley Workforce Board Conference Call Meeting. Rick Larkin and Jim Carey and Brad Quigley and Jim Earl and myself and Jeff Sorensen were on the call. Miranda Stafford, our staff for the region, we talked about membership to the new board of directors. I was, as Um, I was, as, as Lynn was here when I had the conference call, I was really pleased. Um, we pretty much have the board.
It looks like you're getting your ducks all in a row there. You're on schedule. You're ahead of schedule.
Linda, uh, Roush has told us that uh we're setting a fine example for the other regions. Um, but we're hoping, we're going to meet, um, let's see, the twenty-seventh at one-thirty and at that meeting, we will be um approving the board. We have to, we have to have the current region nine board meet, so I've got to talk to um Whitney to set a meeting, a Zoom meeting up for that. Um, but we have several people from Jackson County um that are going to be on the new board who have agreed to serve. Um, Nick will be the representative for the, for the new region for economic development. And then we have a new person that I talked to before about joining uh the Iowa Works Board and we submitted his name to the governor. She approved it. But then we didn't do anything further because it was right at the time we were going to be trying to merge. And we really, as Luanne knows, we didn't really have a regular meeting for the Iowa Works for quite a while. And so, uh, Ron Schaefer um has agreed to serve um as a business person. Um, and we have to be uh gender and politically balanced on that board. And um it just so happens that we pretty much are. And as we indicated before, or as indicated before, that once the new board starts meeting, the CEOs are not a part of the decision-making of that board. But yesterday, we discussed, I brought it up. I said, you know, when, when do we need as CEOs? And in our bylaws, it says we need quarterly. Um, the only thing that we really will be dealing with is the financial side of it. But it was, it was a discussion yesterday that they thought that maybe we should rotate the CEOs so that at least one or two um from the region would attend each one of their meetings just to observe so that we know what's going on, other than, you know, you can't get any, everything from the minutes. If you're not there for the discussion, you're there for the motions, but you don't really know what led up to the decision.
And I'm sure you're still capable to call in too, is that correct?
Well, I, I'm sure to begin with, and that's what I told Nick and I told, told Mike yesterday, or Dave, Ron yesterday, is that a lot of our, to begin with, it'll, they'll be held in musketeens. But um to begin with, I'm sure there'll be, there'll be Zoom meetings.
Yeah, I mean, even after that, you'd probably have the capability of calling.
Because now they.
No, I mean, I, I see a lot of them emails and I, and I skim them and read them briefly, you know, just to keep up a little bit before you're really, really standing on top of things the way it looks, so it's uh.
And we did get the um last, last week, everyone came up and I signed, re- resigned again the uh, the affiliation agreement. And so that's been sent to the state. So when they meet in May, um, they will approve our merger. But um they told us, um, Linda says there's no reason they, they, I mean, they have to approve it because we need all the criteria. So we went ahead and we're negotiating right now with fiscal agent. And that will be the southeast. It's like our ECIA, but it's going to be um southeast. And I talked to them about our ECIA, but they weren't too receptive since it's located in Dubuque County, which isn't a part of the region. So um, but we are working with the fiscal agent and the only problem that we had is it's like with David Farmer being the fiscal agent for the mental health. He actually is an employee of Scott County. He's there, there is um a county of uh employee of record and we needed to find somebody to be the employee of record for um Miranda. And um I talked to, to Miranda last week and the one county that she actually resides in, um, they were not interested because they said that they, they're the uh employee of record for their mental health coordinator. And for two other agencies, they're the uh report, um, employee of record. And they said they really didn't think they wanted to add that additional workload on their auditor. So um, uh, Jeff Sorensen said that he would check with musketeen. He did. And they said that they would agree. It won't cost musketeen anything because the, the region will reimburse for her health insurance. And she told us yesterday, she's not going to need the health insurance till, till twenty-twenty-three because she's on her husband's policy. But that will change in twenty-twenty-three, so she will need that. But um, other than that, uh, was a good meeting yesterday, didn't you think, Luanne? We got a lot done and we're going to meet, as I said again, on the twenty-second. And then the weekend between, we'll have the meeting with uh Michelle from the state board, state office.
Well, that's a, that's good news.
I'm glad it's going.
Once it's wrapped up though, maybe you get a little relief there.
I, that is my, I think that's all of our.
Then if it's quarterly or you just have to listen into a few, that won't be quite so bad. You've been doing a lot of running with that one, so. I see you have, yeah, again, so you have the Limestones RC and D on Thursday night. Uh, um, as far as the COVID for the county, we're basically uh running by the recommendations of the Iowa Department of Public Health and Sarah Hobbs and Lynn, our emergency management. They've been coordinating together daily. Um, supplies, I believe, what I've heard are, are pretty staying pre, um, I mean, we're set pretty good anyway, I think, on our supply so far, so. Hopefully, there's not been any new cases, I don't think, that I've heard of for, by six days or a week or better, so. Um, that's where we're at.
It was the first time I had the opportunity to, to tune in because I've been gone or on conference call meetings at the same time. The last couple of meetings you had, I thought, I found it very interesting.
Yeah, there's a lot of input uh from a lot of different sectors.
Yes, yes, yes.
You got the schools, you have the nursing homes, you have care services and yeah.
Child, children, childcare.
Yeah, it's a good.
It's interesting.
Good communication between everybody that's working.
That's the one thing about, you know, I feel, I, you know, I really feel bad for, for the people with young kids because all of the daycares, most of them are closed. The preschools are closed and I guess it's either fortunate or unfortunate that a lot of the parents are not working. So, but, but you know, for those, I, I know that uh ECIA has decided that we're going to continue to pay the schools, at least for the scholarship holders and their school. Um, so that still gets that revenue, but it's going to be, it's going to be hard on a lot of, a lot, a lot of people. And then yesterday, I don't know if you were home, but I was watching on today's show and they were showing the thousands and thousands of acres of corn and green beans and squash that they were just plowing under.
Does it kind of get people out to harvest them?
No, because they can't sell it.
Well, they shut down another processing site for, for five hundred farmers too.
Yeah, Tama.
But you look at all, I mean, I mean, it just shows acres and acres of sweet corn. And they were just plowing it down. It's really, really sad.
It's going to affect many for some time.
A long, long time. Sure will.
Uh, as far as the jail project goes, just an update on that a little bit, if anybody's listening. We uh, we are going to have John join us next week with, hopefully he gets us some information that we asked for the last meeting. I did talk to him here last week, so we'll tell him what we were looking for again and still have my notes there, so. Hopefully, he can join us next week and that works out and we can keep talking and moving forward with that, so. Any other input? Any old business, new business? Have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, meeting adjourned. Motion carried, meeting adjourned. Just in time, he's going to pull up with.